I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:00 PM. Oh shit, we don't, sorry. We don't have a clerk. Whoops, I didn't even look to see that first. Never mind. All right, take two. I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:01 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Here.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Here.
Vice President Verducci?
Here.
President Lima?
Here. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. In the event of an emergency, those present this evening can exit outdoors in aisle number one or two in the back of council chambers to the front lawn or back parking lot of Town Hall. Moving now to public acknowledgements and commendations, we have one this evening. Recognition of Kevin McGee, our Director of Public Works. I'll read, we have a proclamation here and some hardware to give to him. Certificate of recognition for DPW Director Kevin McGee. Whereas Kevin McGee is a lifelong resident of the town of Coventry and has selflessly given back to his community in a variety of roles as Chairman of the Planning Commission, a former member of the Coventry Housing Authority, Town Council President for the past 12 years as our DPW Director. And whereas Director McGee's wealth of information on all things Coventry has been an asset to stand both personally and professionally, and he is always willing to go above and beyond to take on additional duties and responsibilities. And whereas the town was contacted by the New England Chapter of the American Public Works Association, looking for nominations for their annual award of Public Official of the Year in April. And we were honored to nominate Kevin not only for his work in Coventry, but his dedication at the state level, testifying year after year to get RIDOT to take over the maintenance of their sidewalks. And on June 12th, 2025, at the Crown Plaza in Warwick, Director McGee was selected by the NEAPWA as the Public Official of the Year. And not surprisingly, he was not in attendance because he went back to the office to work. Now therefore be it resolved that the Honorable Coventry Town Council recognizes Director Kevin McGee for his dedication, commitment, and devotion to the town of Coventry. I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the town to be affixed this 24th day of June 2025. Congratulations, Director McGee. Always great to start off the meeting on a good note like that. Moving now to public comment on docketed items only, those items on our agenda this evening. Those in council chambers, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Public comment on docketed items.
Hi, Brittany Boyer, 318 Town Farm Road. I just wanted to speak quickly on the proposed write-offs that we have for these tax purposes. I believe it totaled a little over $205,000. That's a big chunk of money to write off. I feel like anybody, you know, any town, even in a great financial state, that's still a huge chunk of money to just be done with. I understand you end up with these when you have parties who are deceased or companies that go out of business, they move, unfortunately, they kind of just leave their tax burden, they walk away from it, whatever, and especially now that we don't have the, I believe it's the name part is the vehicle tax, we don't have that anymore. So a lot of these have kind of just gone away. But I was looking through this list today, and just through looking, there's 22 pages of this. Just through looking through the first five pages, there are seven businesses that still owe taxes to the town, that are still active businesses in the town. So this in the comments section here says, "All accounts listed are either out of business, gone out of Coventry, out of state, owner is deceased, or company went bankrupt." Like I said, just in the first five pages, there are seven businesses that I drive by every day that are still active in the town. So my first thought was maybe somebody has taken over that business, there's a new owner. Tax IDs are public info. I own a small business, so I have a little bit of knowledge of a tax ID in the business that I work for as far as the accounting portion, I use that pretty regularly. These businesses all have the same tax ID that they had, whether they're from 2012, 2014, 2016. If you have the same tax ID, you're the same business, you're the same entity. So I think before we go ahead and just erase $205,000, maybe we look just a hair deeper into it, just to see if there is any of this that we can recoup. Because 10% of it is better than recouping 0% of it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Members of the public in council chambers, public comment on docketed items only. Come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Members of the public on Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in. Public comment on docketed items only. Public comment going once, twice, three times, public comment is closed. Moving to licenses, we have one this evening, renewal of Bodyworks license, Massage Cosmo, six Coventry Shoppers Park, Coventry, Rhode Island. Do I hear a motion to approve the license?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Capaldi, second by Councilwoman Brown. Any discussion? Clerk, all requirements have been met? Thank you. If there's no further discussion, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Moving to election and our appointment of town officials, we have two this evening. One being the ratification of the appointment of Board of Canvassers Clerk Olivia Fitz, Purver Island General Law, Section 17-8-5. Is Olivia here this evening? Right, I don't know if you and Marcy want to come up and just introduce yourself. This is a Board of Canvassers appointment and just requires Town Council ratification for members of the council and the public. Just make sure the mic's on, the green light.
Sorry. This is Olivia Fitz. She was recommended last week by the Board of Canvassers, and she has a strong recommendation from myself and Doreen LeFond, the HR Director. We had a great pool of applicants, four really impressive people that we interviewed, and Olivia was just the clear choice. She has lots of elections experience. She has been a poll worker since she was 16 years old. She is a member of the West Warwick Board of Canvassers and has worked seasonally for the Board of Elections. She has lots of knowledge and we're just really excited and happy to have her.
Great. Any questions, comments from the council? All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the appointment of Olivia Fitz.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Brown.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Congratulations, thank you. Moving to the appointment of municipal court judge for the Municipal Court of the Town of Coventry in accordance with, help me, Article Roman numerals. Is that 18? Yes. Article 18, Municipal Court, Section 18.03, to be appointed by the Town Council. The individual for consideration this evening is Thomas J. Cronin Esquire. I believe Tom is here. So just some background, obviously this position was held for decades by Arthur Capaldi, who passed away last year, and who this room is dedicated to. In the last, I think it's been almost, we're approaching a year that it's been now unfilled, and we've been kind of just, you know, Solicitor Vedeckia can speak to this as well, kind of just filling it in where we can. We didn't receive any real outside interest that came in for this position. It's not one that is required for us to do a heavy advertisement by charter, straight appointment. So Mr. Cronin has done this job before in other municipalities, he's familiar with it. He's a Coventry resident, his resume was in your packet. So I'll just let Mr. Cronin introduce himself a bit, and then we'll take discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So, Tom Cronin. My office is at 1070 Main Street in Coventry, across from the old police station, as most everybody in town knows it. As President said, I live here in town, I work here in town, I care deeply about our town. So that's the genesis of my interest in the position, of course. It's a great honor to follow Arthur, to be considered for the court. And it's a warm night, and I don't want to waste your time, but I have participated as a municipal court judge deputy or assistant in West Warwick for my partner, John Bernero, who's here to support me tonight, along with my whole firm. They, it snuck out. I didn't advertise that, but, so it's a welcome development. But at any rate, so I've been a practicing attorney for more than 35 years, 20 years here in Coventry. And I do a lot of municipal work, and I've run across a few of you over the years in that capacity. And I'm interested in continuing to serve the town, so thank you.
Councilwoman Capaldi?
This is very bittersweet. I've heard a lot of great things about you, and you've got some big shoes to fill, and I wish you the best of luck, and I'm glad that you're going to be coming aboard.
Very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Thomas Cronin Esquire as municipal court judge for the town of Coventry.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Vice President Verducci.
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hold on. We gotta swear you in. Moving now to resolutions of the council, we have a few this evening, we've got five. First one up, 2025-70 appropriating $60,000 of opioid epidemic litigation proceeds to the Coventry School District. This is pages 21 to 22 in our packets. You remember this builds on the conversation we had at our last meeting with Superintendent Cowart. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by Councilwoman Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-71 authorizing the town manager to sign a contract with CB Utility Company Incorporated of Bristol, Rhode Island, to construct the Coventry High School sewer extension project. This is page 23 in our packet. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Brown, second by Councilwoman Pasqua. Any discussion? Manager Pirlo?
May I give a summary as to how this occurred? Thank you.
Good evening. Maria Broadbent, Assistant Town Manager. So this has been a bit of a long journey. So when we found out that there was an issue with onsite septic system, sewer system, I should say, at the high school, we have started pumping that system out on a daily basis. And over the course of the last year or so, Fussin O'Neil, who's been working as consultant to the town, has designed the project to install sewer line to connect the sewer to the regular sewer system. So it'll go down Reservoir Road and down Tyog Avenue to connect to the high school. In addition to that, we've partnered with Kent County Water, because Kent County Water had two older water lines that were in the same area on Reservoir Road. So this contract, we're paying for our sewer part of it, and Kent County Water is actually paying, and the sewer and the water line are going to be done at the same time. It's, yeah, yeah, it's a good deal for everybody. Because if we didn't do it that way, we would have had to dig down 20 feet and put our sewer lines under the water lines, and eventually they would have to dig up the street. It makes really good sense. So we've checked a lot of boxes for this project, some of them little boxes, some of them really big boxes. The primary source of the funding for this is federal, which means that every little thing that you could possibly have to comply with, we've had to. The review of these bids and all of the paperwork associated with it, it was 200 pages long. So I spared you, didn't send you all of that. But we had three responsible bidders. And what you have in front of you is the bid for CB Utility, which Kent County Water Authority is very familiar with, they've done a lot of utility work for them. We will work closely with the residents and the businesses. They will put a sign out at the end of the road that says the businesses are open during construction. Once we get a little further along, we'll have the phone number for a contact person in case any of the people that live or work there have any issues. And I will be going door to door, as Councilmember Brown had suggested, once we know when they're going to start and communicate with everybody and make sure that everybody knows what's going on. So this is probably one of the bigger utility construction projects that the town has undertaken in quite some time. It's going to not only connect to high school, but we will have the sewer connection laterals installed for about 60 different buildings, in addition to the high school. We have a little bit of waiting to do. We're still working with West Warwick to get the information reviewed for all of the pre-treatment, things that need to happen on the high school itself, so that they are managing things like grease from the kitchen and all of the things that need to be done before their sewer is discharged. That's all been submitted to them, and I expect to hear back on the status of all of that in the next couple of days. So we're moving along, we're hoping that the project doesn't take a year. But there's a chance that it could take up to a year. We're probably, we're hoping for six months. But, you know, we'll see how things go. There's going to be a certain amount of time when they can't work in the wintertime, just because of the weather. There's a stream crossing there, which involves wetlands, and it's probably the most complicated piece of it. Every little thing that you can think of that needed to be reviewed has been reviewed, and we've got all the permits, and we're ready to go. So thank you for considering this. If anybody gets questions from your constituents, your residents, your business members, until we have that 24/7 contact person, you can have them call me, and I'll do my best to answer their questions and meet with them, whatever it is that their needs are and their concerns are.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for Maria? Yes.
Just going back, so duration could be six months to a year, just depending on what's encountered out in there, but we don't anticipate much longer.
It won't go over a year. But they did a lot of borings, so they have a pretty good sense of what's underneath there, you know, so there won't be surprises like they've encountered in other places in the past. So they know where, and this is also an area that's already been disturbed. So it's not like they're digging a fresh ground that's never had utility work done, so you'd know more just by that. But we're hoping for six months? From, yeah, from now, right.
A lot of boring, so there shouldn't be much excitement.
Yeah. That's right. There's a lot of boring in this project.
Any other discussion on the resolution? Thank you, Maria. Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you.
Resolution 2025-72 authorizing the town manager to sign a letter to the federal government opposing cuts to the Community Development Block Grant, otherwise known as CDBG program. This is pages 24 to 26 in our packet. This is to support conversation we had at our last meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-73 authorizing the write-off of delinquent/uncollectible motor vehicle intangible taxes from 2009 to 2023 in the amount of $205,873.41. This is on pages 27 to 56 in our packet. Mr. Savetti, I don't know if you want to come up and answer some of the questions that were in public comment regarding that.
Good evening. Yeah, as far as the specifics, unfortunately Monique Cool, who's the tax collector, she's had a planned vacation for this week. But the list that you have presented before you, my understanding is exactly as Monique had listed there. We utilize a collection agency, so MCA Collection Agency, to try to get collections. We participate in the State of Rhode Island's program, where we attach tax refunds. So if somebody has a refund coming and they have an outstanding tax, we do collect from that source. At this point, again, these are the items that the tax collector had gone through in detail, worked with the attorneys, and felt like we have no ability to collect. So we're just looking at with year-end, you know, next week, we're just looking to clear up the tax roll so that we have a valid receivable. You know, there's still going to be an allowance, but stuff that we think we can still collect. If there's specific items that the taxpayer has, I'm certainly willing to look into those. If the council wants to delay this, we can again.
Do we need to do this tonight? I mean, if, I'm curious if there are seven businesses that are still operating here in town, and we're clearing the books for them, that's concerning to me.
Yeah, no, we can, you know, as part of the financial statements, we set up an allowance. So we're still going to allow 100% on it, it's just to try to reduce that allowance is why we're trying to write these off. Well, we can certainly do that. Like I said, when Monique returns to the office, we can have her double-check the items. My understanding, obviously, if there was, you know, a change in ownership, you could have the same business name, but if there was a change in ownership, we have no right to the property, to the taxes.
Councilwoman Capaldi?
I believe Ms. Boyer said that she only found those seven businesses that are still in business on the first couple of pages. So there may be others that are similar to that, so there may be more businesses still around.
That's a possibility.
Okay.
And I'm going, we looked at from the attorneys, because the attorneys had this list where they've been trying to collect from these taxpayers for a number of years.
I saw some heads nodding, so do I hear a motion to continue to July 22nd?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Thank you. Resolution 2025-74 approving the issuance of bonds and notes of the town of Coventry not to exceed $25 million, consistent with an in-furtherance of an October 3rd, 2023 ballot authorization in which the electors of the town of Coventry approved. This is pages 57 to 59 in our packets. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Brown. Discussion? Manager Pirlo, anything to add?
No, obviously this is part of the package we need to go to Ryback with in order to get our bond in the weeks of July, and we'll have access to the money in August. This is part of the package for that.
There's no further discussion, but please take the role.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Moving to public comment for undocketed items, those items that aren't on our agenda this evening. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Brittany Boyer, 318 Town Farm Road. I wanted to bring up something quickly tonight, hoping that I could get some help from the council. Myself and a couple other local farms, we started a farmer's market in town. We started months and months ago, trying to get the town to allow us to do this on town property, thinking that the library area here was such a great spot, central for everyone. But what we have run into, I also want to add, JP has been a great cheerleader for us. He's come out and visited us, he helped us in the beginning of this, trying to push forward. So we super appreciate that, we just want you to know. The issue we ran into in the beginning, trying to set up this farmer's market, was that on the peddler paperwork, now, I do want to mention to you, we're all real businesses with our own insurance and, you know, business licenses and tax sales permits, and it's not just a bunch of people jumping on town property, trying to sell stuff. But the issue that we came across was that on the peddler's paperwork that we had to fill out, it stamped on the top that there is no vending on municipal property. So that put a pause on everything for us, and we couldn't really move forward with any of these spots we wanted to use, because no matter where we wanted to use, there was no vending. We couldn't vend. We met with the Director of Parks and Rec, and we had a Zoom meeting with the town manager, and we kind of really just couldn't get around how this was going to work and how we were going to do it. Moving forward, I would love to see if that's something that we can try to work around for everybody. I know the library has tried to have book signings with authors, and they have not been allowed to do that because there's no vending on town property. However, you just, you see they have Parks and Rec can set up and have their yard sales, and they can have their summer events, and they can do all of this, and it's okay for them. But I'm really looking to have some support and allow something like a farmer's market. If you guys, you know, you're all more than welcome to come out. We have tons of free stuffs for kids. Coventry Police is coming out this weekend to do Safety Month and Kids Crafts. We sent letters out to the fire departments, all of them, to see if they wanted to be a part and, you know, bring a truck, let kids ask questions. We do, everything for the kids is free, we do pettings, we do all of these things, and we want to be able to bring them to the center part of town, because it's just the best area. We want to include the library and do things with them. We did our own summer reading kickoff with Bring a Book, Take a Book, that we want to donate all those books back to the library. So I'm just looking to see if we can get some support and maybe changing that rule somehow to allow something to work where we can bring that to the town and bring that to everybody. I just feel like it's a really great asset. The only other local one we have is in green, and in the typical Rhode Island fashion, that's so far out there. But otherwise, when people want to do things like this, they're going to Situate, they're going to East Greenwich, they're going to North Kingston. I just want to keep it all right here in Coventry. You figure if you're going out to the market, you're going to stop and get lunch for your kids, you're going to stop and do an activity, you're going to grab your groceries on the way home, and I want to keep all of that money right here in town. So I would just love to see if there's anything we can do about that. Maybe next season, you know, from here until then, we can try to come up with some kind of ideas to... know, from here until then, we can try to come up with some kind of ideas to allow that to happen.
So you said that's a town ordinance, it's, or is it in?
It's stamped on the top of the, of the application, the peddler's application, that we would have to submit, um, the, I don't remember his name, the gentleman in charge of Parks and Rec is Scott. Um, that was the paperwork he wanted us to fill out, but did say to us, you know, at the top, it does say that. So we were trying to figure out a way around that, but the season was so close, we ended up going to a private area.
We can't get too far down the road, because it's not docketed, but I'm confused, because we have, we have other events, like the summer festival on the high school property and the winter festival here.
It seems to be anything that parks.
So it has to be town spot? Oh, I, but is this a town law, or is it just because it's stamped on the top of an old form we have?
I don't know. So like Brittany said, we had the, we had the hour meeting, Brittany, Stacy, there was someone else on that call, and then we told them that we had to look into it and do some due diligence, but then Stacy responded the next day saying, no, we don't, we don't want to wait, maybe we can get it done down the road, but, so we kind of put it, put it on the back burner, and actually, Kim Frenzy is trying to put a farmer's market together, run by the town next year. So that's, that's a coordination that we're trying to, uh, work out.
We, it, it took us, the issue with that is that it took us a couple months to prep this, prepare this, get this off the ground, get it working. It's been super successful, everyone has loved it, we've had a great time. Parks and Rec told us it was going to take them a two-year turnaround to get a farmer's market off the ground. Um, we are two moms who have farms, work full-time, have kids and husbands, and we got this going in a couple months. So I understand, like, you know, our, the reason we were told was, well, we can't put somebody full-time on a farmer's market. Well, we didn't either, we just knew that there was something that this town needed, people were asking for it, so we made it happen. Um, so I don't know if that's something that we can change, if there's a process, I would love to know that process. I know not everything is chiseled and slate forever, um, but I feel like it would benefit a lot of people, and I feel like it would be something that would only bring good things.
Gotcha, okay. Thanks for the background, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
One other question, uh, any update on the EDC?
We actually just had an email from Maria today, hold on, I'll tell you.
Sure.
We have a new form, she had to create a new application form. We just got it today or last night. Um, so we should be moving forward. I'm actually sending that form to the, were you here when we had two people that were up for other commissions and it didn't work out, and we?
Yeah.
Took them to the EDC?
Yeah.
So I have to send it to them to fill out too, so.
The form that I filled out in March is no longer, you want me to refill out the new one?
No, no, I.
No, this is moving forward.
Moving forward, okay.
It added some more fields, like, um, I've got it here, I can.
To learn a little bit more about the people.
It asks, um, name of business, address of business, like if you, if you're a business owner applying, so it's not just resident.
Sure.
Um, are you engaged in agriculture as a source of income, how?
I can send it to you if you want to fill it out.
I mean, it doesn't, if you want to fill it out, fine, if not.
Yeah. It's a little bit more, it's a little bit more in-depth.
Okay.
We know who you are, so.
Okay.
You don't really have to do it.
Excited for updates. Nope, that's it, thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers, uh, public comment on undocketed items? Members of the public on Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in, and just unmute yourselves, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Stacy Nichols, 159 Lewis Farm Road. Um, I just want to provide a correction to the town manager about the farmer's market. It was more, um, Brittany and I do not want to see the farmer's market, and more so personally ourselves, as sort of an exemption to what the rule is. It is not the rule that it has to be a municipal activity. Right now, the paperwork for Parks and Rec says that they are allowed to have vendors. Um, however, when you sign that paperwork, you say that you're in compliance with all other town rules, um, which would mean that as a town rule, you would have a peddler's license, which you can't actually get, um, if you're selling on town property. So our problem was that we don't want an exception for the farmer's market, um, and we want to have a process forward for everybody. Again, I was mostly thinking about the library with this book signing that they were told they could not have, um, and they are also, you know, I guess, they work for the town. Um, my other, you know, just point of that is that Brittany and I have worked very hard. Um, we are not charging people anything to vent at this event. I would say it is about 85% Coventry town businesses. Um, we have given priority to businesses in town to run this event. We are bringing in, when possible, town, um, forms of entertainment, connecting with town community members. So we would really hate to see Parks and Rec sort of rip this away from us. Um, again, we've been working very hard on this and not making anything out of it, other than we also, as farms, have an opportunity to sell. Uh, my other question would be, looking at all of the legal situations for the town this year, are we still feeling we are going to be in budget with the solicitor's line item? Also wondering what the communication is with town council and the RDA. The last RDA meeting, um, so that was May, it was GZA saying they had, you know, used the tax assessor's database to find the town property. Now, this conversation had come up in March, I believe it was the later of the March town council meetings, um, where Brittany had offered to pay for signage, and President Lima said that was the responsible responsibility, sorry, of RDA to provide the signage for those, um, sites. And then GZA literally spent between March and May funding the sites. I'm just wondering if this is a good use of money, and it doesn't really seem to be like there's a lot of communication happening between these two groups. That's all, thank you.
Uh, thank you. I know the RDA is meeting tomorrow. Um, I, I'm just looking at the agenda that was filed now. I don't know, it looks like there's a discussion and update on the redevelopment plan from GZA, I'm not sure what that report entails, if it'll answer the questions you have, um, on that. Um, and then in terms of the legal billing, we will be getting, um, the, I assume, the close of fiscal year '25, budget to actual, probably at the July 22nd meeting, so then we'll know how we finish the year there, but I don't have that financial information available to me right now. Um, but I know that in our last budget to actual, we were on track to stay in budget. All right, any other members of the public on Zoom, public comment on docket, on, undocketed items? Public comment going once, twice, three times, public comment is closed. Moving to introduction of new matters before the council, we have a few this evening. First one, um, discussion on speed cameras in school zones and referral to the Safety Services and License Committee. Um, so this was, there was a, the company that has, has these in other municipalities made a presentation to the Traffic Committee, um, but it didn't go further than that, because it's kind of a council decision whether, what to do there. I know that I get a lot of outreach about traffic in school zones, I know Vice President Verducci has mentioned as well, we figured we could refer this to this committee so they can listen to the spiel and see if it's worth bringing to the full council for consideration. Um, so do I hear a motion to refer?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman? Second, second by Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion?
Kind of a question clarification. If we get other incidents of, of this where people think, you know, this is a hotspot or that's a hotspot, do we formally, you know, hear it here and send it to committee, or do we refer?
I can answer that, the, the state law for this, you can only put them in school zones, so there's really like no hotspots.
He meant stop signs and.
I meant traffic control in general, but thank you.
Yeah, we, we can't get into traffic control in general, but the speed camera piece, yeah. All right. There's no further discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Item B, I believe, is being continued to the 22nd, Mr. Cronin?
Yes, Thomas Cronin for the applicant. Um, this ma, the solicitor contacted me this afternoon, this matters to be continued to the July meeting, I believe, based on the commentary tonight before, from the council is July 22nd?
Yes.
Okay, so yes, continued to July 22nd.
Right. Do I hear a motion to continue the request?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Brown?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And approval of Narragansett Electric and Verizon New England Incorporated to be granted permission to locate and maintain poles, wires and fixtures, including the necessary sustain and protecting of fixtures to be owned and used in common by you petitioner along and across the following public ways, Old North Road relocating P335 foot south away from the customer's driveway and installing P2-75. Do I hear a motion to approve the, um, request?
Make the motion, second.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Brown, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Um, at this time, I will seek a motion to accept into the record, um, the notice to, um, the notice of, um, the chief and major, correct?
Yeah.
Um, to appe, um, that this was a docketed item this evening for executive session. Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion? And they were notified? Uh, if there's no discussion, uh, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And now I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the following, closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42-46-5A4 for update on investigatory proceedings related to allegations of misconduct. Executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42-46-5A1 for job performance re-town manager annual evaluation, and executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42-46-5A1 for character or physical or mental health of a person or persons. Do I hear a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Councilman?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion? Um, and the, the notice for the chief and major was for item C, right? Okay, great. Hearing none, uh, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
Will now go into executive session.
At this time, I'll seek a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi.
Second.
Second by Vice President Verducci. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Could I hear a motion to seal the minutes of executive session?
Make a motion.
Motion by Vice President Verducci.
Second.
Second by Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yeah.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci. President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Members of the public, the council met in executive session to discuss the three items listed on the docket. A discussion was had, no votes were taken.